Executive session, legal implications of Arizona Supreme Court decision in State of Arizona versus City of Tucson, case number CV-20-0244-ESSA, Mayor Council direction relating to pending litigation in City of Tucson versus State of Arizona, Pima County Superior Court, case number 2020-1904. It is being held pursuant to AR Section 38-431.03, A3 and Day 4.
May have a motion to go into executive session?
No move.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, pick it by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, we'll go into executive session. All those that can go into executive session with us, you can leave this room, go into the executive session meeting, and then we'll be back after executive session.
...
I did just want to mention quickly, thank you and Councilmember Santa Cruz and Councilmember Ulrich for your thoughts on the ARP, the American Rescue Plan dollars. What I would like to suggest is that maybe on the 22nd, we schedule about an hour for that discussion. Now, keep in mind, I will caution you a little bit in that the final guidance has not been provided. It won't be available until about the middle of July, but there is some value in having conversation now. I suspect that the restrictions will be less down the road as opposed to more, so we can start with the guidance that we know exists today, and then have a conversation about what the framework can look like and kind of the umbrella opportunity for us to get these dollars out quickly once that guidance is finalized. That's all, Mayor. Happy to answer questions.
Mr. Ortega, I think I can say with you that we should have mayor and council about the American Rescue Plan dollars and how we're going to use them. I appreciate and thank my colleagues, Councilmember Ulrich and Councilmember Santa Cruz, in helping me think about the framework that we should establish as we move forward for usage of the American Rescue Plan dollars. I think we have an opportunity, incredible opportunity, as a jurisdiction and community to invest in transformative policy that will not just affect our community positively this year or next year, but could be a long-term transformative investment in affordable housing, in investments in our youth, in workforce training, in cybersecurity, in infrastructure for our neighborhoods and our parks. And so I just wanted to make sure that we provided that framework so that we have a good discussion moving forward. I agree we should have a study session item for the 22nd so that we can hear from everyone on this item. And I too want to thank everyone that participated and made possible the vaccination site at the TCC. It's incredible the work that was done by City of Tucson employees, by you, Mr. Ortega, everyone that volunteered and participated to vaccinate our fellow Tucsonans and county residents to the tune of 88,000 people.
Second, second.
There is a motion in the second session by saying aye.
Aye.
It sounds like a chorus. So we are back into session. What is the pleasure for item two?
We have a second.
I would ask for a motion as follows. I move that the mayor and council direct the city attorney and city manager, as discussed, executive session, and specifically to the following, to take all actions necessary, calling and conducting an election in May 2022, for the purpose of giving voters the opportunity to decide whether to extend the transaction privilege previously authorized in 2017, together with any amendments or ballot measures the mayor and council choose to put to the voters at this direction. Direction to the city attorney, schedule and order, mayor and council approval, calling this election.
I'm sorry, Mike, I'm sorry to do this to you, but we had so much echo that your direction was really not understandable. So if anyone is doubling up in one room, if you can not just mute yourself, but also make sure that you have no sound on your computer screen. Only one person in one room can have sound. Everybody else needs to be put themselves on mute and not have any sound, take away the sound on your computer. So again, Michael, thank you so much. I'm so sorry to do this, but please repeat your suggested motion.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for making sure it's audible and clear to everybody. The motion I would ask for is, I move that the mayor and council direct the city attorney and the city manager to proceed as discussed in executive session, and specifically to take all actions necessary for calling and conducting an election in May 2022, for the purpose of giving voters the opportunity to decide whether to extend the transaction privilege tax previously authorized in 2017, together with any charter amendments or ballot measures that the mayor and council choose to put to voters at that time. This direction includes direction to the attorney to schedule an ordinance for mayor and council consideration to call this election.
Is there a motion? There is a motion. Is there a second? Yes. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass. Ready, we move on to three, your manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Hopefully they echo. So this is the update on COVID. There's two parts to this, Mayor, and members of the council. The first is the COVID update, and I'll provide you a very brief overview of that. Then I'd like to go over the memorandum, Mayor, that you, Councilmember Santa Cruz and Councilmember Ulic sent as well for the ARP. So first of all, on the COVID item, we have terminated our presence at the TCC, along with Pima County and volunteers. As of May 28, we had provided 88,850 doses. So a quick shout out, Mayor, and members of council for your leadership on this, and the great staff and volunteers and City of Tucson folks that made that happen. It was really miraculous in terms of how that all came about. Udall, as you know, TMC is providing vaccinations there. They will be wrapping up at the end of this month. So they're expecting that they'll finish up that site by the end of June. El Pueblo, the vaccine site has moved to the El Pueblo Library. So they are still providing vaccines. So it's at the library Monday through Wednesday. Excuse me, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM, trying to hit the folks that might be working during the day. So that is onsite registration that's available to folks, so they can take advantage of that. All other information is available on the Pima County COVID vaccine website. You can get registered, so that it's important that folks know there still is opportunity for the testing as well as vaccines through Pima County. So Mayor, that concludes my commentary on the COVID piece. I did just want to mention quickly, thank you and Councilmember Santa Cruz and Councilmember Ulic for your thoughts on the ARP, the American Rescue Plan dollars. What I would like to suggest is that maybe on the 22nd, we schedule about an hour for that discussion. Now, keep in mind, I will caution you a little bit in that the final guidance has not been provided. It won't be available until about the middle of July, but there is some value in having conversation now. I suspect that the restrictions will be less down the road as opposed to more, so we can start with the guidance that we know exists today, and then have a conversation about what the framework can look like and kind of the umbrella opportunity for us to get these dollars out quickly once that guidance is finalized. That's all, Mayor. Happy to answer questions.
Mr. Ortega, I think I can say with you that we should have, Mayor and council, about the American Rescue Plan dollars and how we're going to use them. I appreciate and thank my colleagues, Councilmember Ulic and Councilmember Santa Cruz, in helping me think about the framework that we should establish as we move forward for usage of the American Rescue Plan dollars. I think we have an opportunity, incredible opportunity, as a jurisdiction and community to invest in transformative policy that will not just affect our community positively this year or next year, but could be a long-term transformative investment in affordable housing, in investments in our youth, in workforce training, in cybersecurity, in infrastructure for our neighborhoods and our parks. And so I just wanted to make sure that we provided that framework so that we have a good discussion moving forward. I agree, we should have a study session item for the 22nd so that we can hear from everyone on this item. And I too want to thank everyone that participated and made possible the vaccination site at the TCC. It's incredible, the work that was done by City of Tucson employees, by you, Mr. Ortega, everyone that volunteered and participated to vaccinate our fellow Tucsonans and county residents to the tune of 88,000 people. Unbelievable, wonderful work, without even asking questions about how we were going to pay for it. So wonderful work, and thank you for doing that. Councilmember Fimbras? Councilmember Fimbras?
Oh, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. Mike, can the mayor and council be reminded of where more terms will or could be lifted on June 30, such as bus fares, evictions, water bills, TEP bills, Southwest gas bills, or otherwise? What plan do you have in dealing with this and the potential effect on the citizens of Tucson?
Sorry, Mayor, Councilmember Fimbras, question on that. Since you know, we have backed down the path of... Actually, there you go. Thanks, Roger. We've been going down the path of reducing the delinquencies, providing help to those folks that needed it. So we are, I'll use the term "back to normal", with regard to water. It's my understanding the utilities are in the same boat. However, per our commitment as well as the utility companies' commitments, there is a willingness to work with folks that are affected or impacted by the pandemic by giving them payment plans. All of the utilities had committed to doing that as part of the dollars that we had put forth during the pandemic. I have not heard any concerns that that has been a problem. So at this point, those are going down the path. My understanding, and the latest info that I had, was on the evictions continuing, but I also know that there is a lot of dialogue about that at the federal level. And so I'm expecting that we'll get some guidance on that fairly quickly. Thank you, Mayor.
On bus fares, Mike.
Sure, thank you, Councilmember. So part of the tentative budget proposal and recommendation is to not charge bus fares through the end of calendar year 21. So December 31 would be the new date. As you remember, you've previously given me direction to begin charging July 1. The recommended budget includes a language that would keep that through December 31. My plan is to bring back to you a recommendation for further decision and direction from council in November, so that we'll take a look at how things are going in the community as a whole, and that could be extended through the end of the fiscal year, which would be through June of '22.
So Mike, do you have a motion to look at that? I'd be willing to make the motion that we go to the end of December 31, or has that already been approved?
Mayor, Councilmember Fimbras, that has not been approved as of yet. It does need to be, that guidance and direction does need to occur before the end of this month. So anytime that you wanted to give me that direction, that is what I am recommending at this point. And again, part of that motion could also include coming back to you no later than November with a recommendation as to what we will do January through June of '22.
So moved. There's my motion.
So your motion would be to expand, extend?
Bus fares to December 31, bring it back in November for review, so we can push it back to the whole fiscal year. Or else I wanted to go to the next fiscal year too, Madam Mayor.
Alrighty. Councilmember Santa Cruz, you have your hand up, and then we'll see if we get a second for your motion, Councilmember Fimbras.
I said second, Mayor.
Alrighty.
I also just wanted to say that I was under the impression we had already made this motion about going through the end of December, but that we hadn't added the piece of coming back in November with the plan for the continuation of the next fiscal year, because I was concerned that a lot of the marketing material that Suntran is putting out is saying that fares are only free through the end of this month. And I wanted to make sure that our messaging is consistent and that we're letting the community know that that's not the case, that it's through the end of the year, not the fiscal year.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Santa Cruz. We'll make sure that is the case post-test. Thank you.
So there is a motion and a second. Any further discretion from my colleagues? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Wonderful. So you have your direction, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, and we'll begin immediately with the marketing on that, so there's clarity, and we will bring it back to you in November at the latest.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Excellent. So we can move on to item four. I just want to make sure that we're staying on time, because we do have two public hearings later today. So we will move on to item four. Time has been set aside for discussion of the tentative adoption of the fiscal year 21-22 budget. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I'm going to turn this over to Jeff in just a second, but I wanted to make a couple of comments ahead of time. The first is, keep in mind that the tentative adoption of the budget is setting the cap for the expenditure. So the expenditures of the city government are what you are establishing today. You are not necessarily establishing the chemistry of those expenditures, meaning how those dollars within the budget work. It's just the cap, in essence. We'll bring back a conversation for that detail on June 22 when you consider the final adoption. So that's number one. Number two, tonight's public hearing on the budget is not a required public hearing. This will be the second public hearing that the mayor and council will hold on the budget. The required public hearing is next meeting, which is on the 22nd. So by the time the budget process is complete, we will have had three, well, you will have had three public hearings. The last thing is, during the conversation, either at study session or as a part of the motion for the tentative budget consideration, I would like the council to give me direction to include and message to visit Tucson 500,000 as a film incentive. They have asked me to move that decision up a little bit by about 30 days. So I will be asking the council to consider that and give me direction to include it. It has been built into the budget, but normally I don't give somebody authorization to move with that until the final adoption. But I would appreciate getting direction on that today at some point, Mayor. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jeff. I believe he does have a brief PowerPoint to go over. Thank you.
I do. Thank you, Mike. And hopefully you guys, or you can see my screen, Mayor and council. Excellent. So I'll just take a few minutes recognizing that we need to stay on time. I'm excited. Tentative budget's always an exciting time, although Mike and I, this is our favorite topic. We are excited to be getting within sight of the end. So I think this is a really good process, and I really want to take a couple of minutes and look back over what we've done and achieved throughout the last, really, almost full year of working on budget. And in doing that, I want to highlight some of the, I think, what I believe are really the major accomplishments that you as a council have directed us and under your leadership have taken us to, as well as some of the things that as staff we've worked on to get in. So without delay, I just wanted to really talk about the process that we did to align, you know, aligning the vision. So the really interesting thing I think that we did this year, and based on kind of the direction that we had going into this process, is we really worked through engagement on a number of fronts. And what you have tonight in front of you as a tentative budget is the culmination of a lot of different opportunities for public input from the population, from the mayor and council, from staff. We've had multiple town halls. We've had monthly discussions on budget. It's been on center the entire last year. In fact, we started that discussion as early as July of last year, going into the budget. So really, what we've done is built on top of all of those steps and continued an iterative process. For instance, when you saw finally the recommended budget, what you saw was really just the culmination of all those discussions. So there should have been no surprises, and we were all on the same page from that development process and working through that. So that's a really unique opportunity. Having done this for 20-plus years and been in a lot of different places, I'll tell you, that's a very unique process. And I'm very proud of that process. I'm proud of the city, and thank you for your leadership in doing that, because I think that this, like I said, it's, we talk about transformative projects, and the mayor, you say the budget's a moral document. It's a moral strategic document. It kind of lays out how we're going to operate, and I think that this is reflective of that transparent, engaged process. So I'm very excited to kind of go through the last bits of it with you. As Mike mentioned, the manager mentioned, this is a tentative budget. This is the cap. You'll have your final adoption hopefully on the 22nd. So I just want to kind of hit the highlights for you. First, and this is probably what I would call the lead, is you have community safety. There's about $5.1 million for community safety. That's about 14 different positions, everything from IT support to other types of positions to help in that process, and expansion of the independent auditors office, some housing programming, as well as the expansion of the CSO program. And I think it's important to note that when we look at the public safety budget or the community safety, and we really hone in on the PD budget, where you saw the growth in that budget is related to CSOs, the mental health programming, and those areas. It's not, the pay increase, for instance, was completely funded with vacancy funds. So those pay increases didn't increase the budget. We have our POBs, so we saw a little bit of that POB growth. But the growth for the budget for PD is really around those items like fuel, insurance, that you saw everywhere, not in operational increases to the police department. And again, then, the CSOs are an extension of that effort. So I think that that's a highlight that I think is important for the community to understand and to know, and for a clarification purpose. The next part is the resident recovery. This is a focus on small business support, and that initiative includes navigators, international business specialists, Ignite Tucson, which is a marketing plan. So about $800,000 invested there. We have the Office of Equity. This is support for the Equity Officer, which was already included in the budget. We have employee retention, and this is significant. This is the next step in a plan that was started in 2016. Retaining and hiring is the most important thing organizations do. Retention of the best employees and retention of quality employees across the spectrum serves the residents better. So in working through that, we have the general classification, which are the non-sworn groups. We have the police, again, fully funded with vacancy funds, fire, and then the long-term recognition. I'm happy to say that as of this week, hopefully Thursday, I believe, we'll see how it goes, but I think for the most part it should be there, will be the increases based on the market analysis. Then probably the first paycheck in July will be the one-time recognition for all those employees with 28 years or greater on July 1. This is significant, and this is probably the most altering step of everything we've done in this process. And that's due to your leadership and the continual management of that budget throughout the year. So I just wanted to bring that into a highlight. And again, most of that this year is funded with, or going into next year, is funded with the vacancy funds. Other budgetary considerations. So once we presented the recommended to you, we, of course, tied down some pieces, did some additional analysis and so forth. The biggest part that I want to highlight in this is the $14 million in 2022 for roads. When you add that to HERF and the other projects, that's a significant investment. And if you really think about it in our financial plan, we have two years of that $14 million. So that's $28 million over the next two years of discretionary funding that the mayor and council have to invest in roads. We've done some other things in that process, repair of the fountain, support for the Fort Lowell, Louisiana, El Presidio, different things, and looking at some different revenue options, and those different little pieces. But those are the big, significant kind of pieces, kind of achievements. I will point out, the film incentive that Mike mentioned is in here at $500,000 that we'll be looking for for direction. So recommended tentative, there's been about 30 million of changes from the recommended to the tentative budget. A lot of that's due to shifting of the funding. For instance, we had originally planned to have HERF funds support the road programs, but our revenue projections were coming higher than expected. So that was a significant change, and a number of those other little changes back and forth. We're going to add about 80 positions this year. That's 20 CSOs, the small business navigators, the community, some folks for community services, the housing first team, the public records. And I'll say, the 12 PD positions for public records are to improve the transparency and speed up the release of records at the police department. So they're there to help that process and provide additional support for the public through that area. So the next, let's talk about engagement in the community, because I think one of the clear things that are the clear messages I received after last year in our experience and in our engagement tool was that we really wanted to make that the centerpiece, and I think be intentional about our process and how we wanted to engage the public. We've done a number of different things. The manager had multiple discussions. We've had mayor and council priorities. We've had various public hearings. We've conducted town halls, so the mayor's office hosted. Ward 4 has hosted one. We have the participatory tool, and I'll talk about that in a little more detail in a moment. And we've also had open comment. So we've heard throughout the year, not just during the budget time, a lot of input related to the budget. So when we look at the engagement, what we've seen is about 77 folks have come to our storyboard. About 120 folks have come to our budget tool, and this was updated earlier today. We've had about 40 people do budgets, and about 73 visitors to the comments fields. We've had four comments, but I'll say that the last poll that I had a little bit after lunch, about two and a half hours ago, had 12 comments, and they were pretty evenly mixed. They were about a third roads, about a third community services, and about a third public safety support. So those are kind of important. And we've had about 2.25 hours of public input. Now, if you remember last year, these numbers were significantly higher, but I think what we had last year was a confluence of a number of issues that brought a number of people to the budget discussion, which isn't necessarily happening this year. Because if we look around and talk about the things that were going on at that time in the national media, national news, and here locally, there was some input and some participation that was driven off of that. So when we look at kind of what the budget tool says against what our budget looks like for direct services, one, because one is all you can have, 100% is 100%, you can't have more than that. So it really, if you compare the colors, the blues against the blues and so forth, the budget is not too far off that they're proposing. And I'll show you a better table in just a second, Mayor. I know you're splitting in to look at that. The, what we're doing in our budget is very reflective, or closely reflective, of what the residents have put in the budgetary tool. So when you look at this compared to, this is the city's budget, this is a percentage of the city budget, and this is what the budget tool has yielded. So you can see, for instance, environmental services, and I apologize, that's cut off, and this is right out of our Open Gov tool, is there's a 1/10th of a percent difference. Same thing for parks, 2/10ths for planning, housing and community development, there's be a higher investment there, IT, transit, public safety, communications, fire, oddly enough, turned out about the same. The recommendation, the budget tool, water versus the city's budget for water is about 6/10ths difference. Probably the biggest area of difference, as would be expected right now, would be about, in PD, and it's about 8/10ths of a point, or 8/10ths of a percent, sorry, not a point, about eight points. So, but that, to me, tells us that we are not significantly off in any area, but we're pretty close to what we're getting in our feedback tool, recognizing that we've only had about 40 budgets come in. So this isn't a scientifically valid look, but it gives us some inclination and some directional input. Coming up, we still have a couple of opportunities for engagement. We have the public hearing tonight, and as Mike mentioned, on the 22nd, which will be the hearing that will be the last public hearing we'll have, and that's for the adoption. It's technically a hearing on the tentative budget, and then you'll have your final adoption. We have another budget town hall coming up this week in Ward 6. So thank you, Councilman Kuzicak, for hosting, and we'll be doing that. And then our budget participatory tool will stay open through the end of this week, and there'll be open comments, of course, during the regular council meetings. Beyond that, these are just the websites for our priority tool. We have, the budget tool is both in English and Spanish, and we have our open comment fields that we can take that are both in English and Spanish. So we're excited about that. So we're excited about that, and we feel like that through these different tools and all these different avenues, we've been able to achieve throughout the process, a high level of engagement. So. Sorry about that. I got a little bit ahead of myself. So I wanted to talk real quick about the fiscal sustainability. So we've achieved balance. So I'm not going to spend a ton of time, because you've seen this in the general fund, we have revenues expenditures. These are all the adjustments we've gone through. So this is what made up all of the detail that I talked earlier, and this is all in your packet from this agenda. And you can see the $6 million of funding going back to HERF, so forth. But I think what is most important about this is when you look at this slide, so this is the revenue over/under slide, that we're roughly going into 23 and on. I would argue that this is close to structural balance with particularly reaching a 25, 26 timeframe. To give you an idea, this is less than 2% of the total general fund. So we know that there is at least three, 2% to 3% play in the general fund every year because these are projections. So for all intents and purposes, these are structurally balanced years going out. And you can see we are able to maintain our policy levels. And if you remember this chart, when this, the line that says unassigned over/under policy level, when that dips below zero, that means we're below our policy levels. Well, through our forecast window, we're at about 19.5 million. So at the end of the day, all else being equal, obviously, things will change, and we understand that. But all else being equal, we are in good shape, and we have a strong financial plan going into the future. And then HERF, we have a similar situation. The HERF is similarly strong. We see that we're going to use fund balance by design as we've saved up money over time. We have the 11 million in neighborhood roads. This is helping to support the 14 million in the general fund. So of that 14, 11 comes from HERF. But you can see that that's the first year where that debt service rolls off. We go from 12.6 to 1.5. Then after that, it continues to be invested in road improvements into the future. So that 11 million isn't going away after that. It just stays in the HERF, at this point, is in the HERF plan versus being in the general fund. But we draw down over the window the HERF fund of about 3.5 million, and that's not unreasonable, given the size and the nature of the HERF fund and the risk and so forth. So just a couple of things I want to point out. This is Mike's favorite slide because it helps really articulate where all the budget funds go. General government is really all those other pieces of, that don't really have an departmental home. That includes, the biggest chunk of that is our capacity we built in for next year for our reserve levels. We've put in capacity to help us be nimble for our fund balance. The 7% of our fund balance, roughly about $40 million. So you can see how much of the total budget, 1.86 billion, with a B, of the, what percentage each of these departments are of that total. Now, I'll tell you that this little green slice right here, that's business services. The name was too big, so it didn't fit on the graphic. But other than that, you can kind of get an idea of where all of our money is going comparatively. The best story, I think, or really, one of the best points of this is that really where we spend our money is in transportation, mobility, roads, and in water, that those are the big chunks. We have the TSRS, which I know you have an item later on, but those are the biggest chunks that really kind of get the most of that money, right? So those are really the higher users. Then you kind of get into police, which is less than 10% and housing, community development, and so forth. So this is always good information. This is drawn directly out of our budget tool. So everybody that goes into our tool and the engagement process, this is what they see. All the graphics you see today were generated out of that. So we are, so the public has access to all this information as well. Okay. So with that, I'm going to move on to the final piece. So as again, like I said, I'm very excited to be here because we're close to the end. I always like getting an adopted budget. We have our final budget adoption on June 22nd. That's the plan, at least at this point. And I'm going to turn it back to you, Mike, our mayor, and I'll be happy to take any questions and answer what I can.
Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Manager. I just want to point out that I'm very happy that even after a year full of crisis in 2020, that we have such, that we're in such financial health. And so that takes a lot of work. That takes years of discipline that we've been able to practice here as mayor and council. And I do want to talk about what a historic move the mayor and council are taking or potentially taking if we approve this budget with a $33 million investment in our most precious resource, which are the city of Tucson employees, our workers, and what a difference that makes, not just to the employee, but also to their families and the community. And so I'm proud of the work that we've done this year, including funds for, additional funds for the community safety program, as well as our Equity Office, our investment in services to the community that will make a difference in the long term. So congratulations to all of us. I think it's a very good place to be in, to be in a fiscally stable place that we are, historic investment in our roads. We've worked really hard to do that as well. And so just wanted to make sure that we gave the kudos and the you know, pats in the back to our team, Jeff and your team, Mr. Ortega and your team for really helping us get to where we're at. My question is, the state legislature still has not made, they have not voted on their budget. And one of the proposals that I think are one of the most dangerous proposals is the idea of approving a flat tax. Part of the state shared revenues that the city of Tucson receives back are those income taxes that our residents put into the state funds. And the state shared revenue returns some of those funds put in by Tucson taxpayers. If Governor Ducey and the state legislature passes a flat tax, we still are in danger of losing $27 million a year. So, Mr. Ortega and Jeff, where do we go from here? Because we're in the process of adopting our budget, but we still haven't heard the state's plans for their budget.
Sure, Mayor. Let me take a shot. Sure, absolutely. And that's an excellent point. I believe that several of you have asked me the same question. And so I think it's a very important discussion. So first of all, I think the key piece to this is we are balanced. A $27 million hit will put us out of balance. It's almost that simple. And so the conversation then becomes, how do we address that as a team? Now, there are options that we could employ. None of them are great, but we would obviously guide and help bring that back into some someone's balance. I won't call it structural balance, but we'll bring it into some someone's balance. I think the key message, though, Mayor, is if that flat tax is approved, it will sting, and it will be a challenge for us. Now, the difficulty is there hasn't been a decision made. We actually had expected the decision would be made last week or about a week ago. And, but we have a deadline as well to complete our budget. So the budget as it stands today does not account for that, but we are watching that very closely. And once we get that guidance, once we understand what that impact could be, then we'll certainly bring that to you along with some suggestions and recommendations for how we would address it.
Mr. Manager, and it's $27 million according to the League of Cities and Towns that could potentially be a $27 million hit every year. Am I correct?
Mayor, I think that might, it depends on which option, because there's other, there's different options that are out there. And it ramps up to that. It's not the first year. So the challenge is, as Jeff was outlining, what that looks like in '24, '25, and '26. Right now, we're in a solid position. And we're not rolling in dough, by the way. I want to make sure we're all clear on that. But if we have to make up now in anticipation of that reduction in '23, '24, '25, et cetera, then we have to start, that's where it's going to sting. And what happens, Mayor, is my understanding, again, it's very fluid up there, but that it's ramping up. It'll ramp up over time. But again, that's speculation since nothing has approved, but that it could be very, very difficult for us.
Thank you. Councilmember Santa Cruz?
Mayor, I guess I wanted to start off with saying, like, I'm just like so annoyed right now that we continue to call this a participatory budgeting tool when I try to clarify so many times that that is not, it's not what we're doing. What we're doing is a very basic public engagement tool that the city has put out just to kind of be transparent at a very basic level. So again, I continue to show my frustration because I don't know how many times I have raised this with the city manager and staff that you're conflating and then just like misrepresenting what we're doing when you're calling it a participatory budgeting tool. Second, that I just, you know, I guess, thank you for being transparent with the information about the budget increase for police, for the police department, because I feel like that level of transparency hadn't been articulated to my office in the past. And so I just want to make sure that like my colleagues on the council are aware of that. We just saw the statistic that Jeff showed us about the public feedback we've gotten on the different departments and how off we are on that piece. And so what, how are we thinking, or how are we justifying, or how are we making sense of all of this? Like, I just want to make sure that we're doing the math. And then second of all, city manager, we're talking about the increase in worker pay, which I totally agree with, that we should be paying our workers, you know, a fair wage, and that we're using our vacancy savings to do that. So what does that mean moving forward? Are we shrinking the footprint of the police department from here on out to be able to, every year, be balanced in our payment for police officers? And then are we also doing that? Are we also sacrificing vacancies citywide for the rest of our workers? I just feel like the public is owed, you know, some transparency on that and not just like, well, we can do it this year and next year, we'll have to figure it out.
Mayor, Councilmember Santa Cruz, thank you for those comments. Number one, again, we know that the name on that tool is not accurate. Unfortunately, we weren't able to change it in time for the meeting. So we'll make sure that in the future, because you are correct. We are conflating budget participatory tool with public engagement. And so we'll make sure that that gets corrected as a part of that. So that's number one. Number two, if you remember the discussion about the vacancy savings and the way that we had projected out over the next four years, I believe it was four years, maybe five, where the vacancies for not only the department, the police department, fire department, communications, but also all of the city departments were factored in. And the reason that we did that is the way that we used to craft the budget was we made an assumption about of a 2% vacancy factor. And we needed to do that to build in the flexibility, to build up the fund balance to the policy levels that were established by council. So what we've done now is we've actually put a model together, making assumptions about how those positions will be filled that are more, I'll use the term realistic, in terms of how many folks we're actually going to be able to bring into the system. Now, this coming year, the vacancies will fund the raises. In future years, that may not be the case. And so I don't want you to think that from here on out, vacancies will fund all of those increases in salaries. The vast majority of the increases will be covered by vacancies. And if you remember, in most of those departments, I think we were stabilizing, if you will, at about 93%. We were projecting as high as 96%. So 4% of that is still funding those raises. And that's going to be a function of what happens in the marketplace, but also within the departments themselves. So there will be an increase, if you will, in staff cost over time as we fill some of those vacancies. Now, that doesn't preclude the mayor and city council from making a decision about filling some of those vacancies going forward or filling them in a different way. So for example, if we continue to carry significant vacancies in one of the departments like police, I can see a scenario where the city council can have a conversation about shoring up the community safety program as opposed to, because we can't fill it with commissioned officers. That's a conversation that can happen in the future year, but all within the confines of the dollars that were established for those vacancies. Does that help you, Councilmember Santa Cruz?
I think in the way that you talk about the budget, it is, I'm just trying to make it a little more accessible to the folks that we hear from in the community. And so I think, you know, the elephant in the room and what we continue to tiptoe around, it is, like, we have been having a conversation about what does community safety look like and what are the needs of the community now and in the future? And I feel like we, like, again, I support paying people, you know, a fair wage, but that there's always, there's a give and take in how we get there. And so I just don't feel comfortable at this moment saying, yes, we're filling it with vacancies, but in a year or two from now, like, the footprint that we have in place is going to need, is going to require more and more funding because that is not, you know, the direction or the conversation that we've been having out in the community, what we've heard from the community and at the table here. So I'm just trying to understand how your justification and what we're seeing and how you're like robbing Peter to pay Paul right now, and then what is that going to look like moving forward?
Sure. Mayor, Councilmember Santa Cruz, those are fair questions. And I think that the key piece to this goes back to those vacancies and the vacancy savings that are around that. So if you think of it, the dollars have been budgeted for many, many years at one level. And so all I'm suggesting is that by being, I'll use the term realistic, in filling positions, the actual expenditure is less than that, and in some instances, pretty dramatically. And all I'm doing is I'm saying to you, let's use the delta, let's use the difference for the raises. And that's across the board. Now, the key piece to this, though, is as Jeff outlined in the five-year model, I wouldn't do this if I didn't think we could sustain it. And that's a key piece, you know? So when you look at the modeling that we've put together, that five-year model is very telling that initially, we're actually using some of our fund balance for some of the expenditures just across the board for the budget. But over time, it stabilizes. And as Jeff mentioned, as early as '23, we're at a 2% difference between revenues to expenditures. The reason I point that out is because that gives you, at least from a budgeting standpoint, the level of comfort that these are sustainable using vacancies as well as new revenue. I'm not going to tell you that the dollars aren't going up and that the budgets aren't going to increase, but they are stabilized based on those assumptions of vacancies within the budget. So I'm trying to explain it, at least in terms of the way that I'm.
I am. So then my next question is, could we just get rid of those vacancies and positions and make it just, you know, move that money so that it's just specific to pay and not have those vacancy positions in the budget?
Mayor, Councilmember Santa Cruz, that's a great thought and one that we actually considered and went down a path of, okay, if we know that certain positions aren't going to be used because they're going to be filled, why don't we just, I'll use the term sweep, right? The challenge with that is at what point? So one of the things that we've suggested is, on an annual. So one of the things that we've suggested is, on an annual basis, the council hasn't really weighed in on those vacancy projections. And so this is the first year that, that you all get an opportunity to really look at what that modeling looks like and where those dollars can be used. Now, I will tell you about almost six years ago, when I first walked in the door, once the council approved the budget, the dollars for the entirety of the department were up to the department to use as they saw fit. Once I realized that we were carrying significant vacancies, that caused some potential inefficiencies within some of the departments. And so what I said is, we are going to sweep the vacancies at the end of the year. So th- those dollars are not available to you as a department unless you're filling the positions. And Councilmember, what that does is that gives you, as the council, the opportunity to weigh in on how those dollars are used. Because on an annual basis, you are, you are dictating, if you will, the chemistry of the dollars and how much is to be used for operations, how much is to be used for vac, for salaries. If that chemistry changes, you should have the opportunity to weigh in on that. And so you do with the fund balance at the end of the year. So in the good old days, the dollars would just stay in the pot for the department to be used for operations. But today, in the last probably four years, now those vacancies are swept, I use that term loosely, swept into the general fund for discussion of where the priorities are for the council for the subsequent year. And that's how we've been able to fund one-time expenditures as well as some of the one-time distributions that you've authorized for staff, those kinds of things. So, so clearly on an annual basis, when we're looking at vacancies of up to 10%, that's a great conversation to have, and so why don't we just zero those out if we're not going to use them? And instead, look at dollars elsewhere, or, or look at the needs elsewhere for the movement of those dollars. Happy to do that, I think, going forward. Happy to answer the questions, Mayor.
Ready. I do have Councilmember Fimidis hand up. Councilmember Fimidis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Michael, you mentioned the Visit Tucson and Tucson film incentive. Do we need to do anything with that today?
Mayor, Councilmember Fimidis, I would like direction on that. Visit Tucson has asked me to move that forward. They do have some things that they're in the works for them. So I would like direction at some point from you that I can give them a, a letter of commitment so that they can move forward with their project.
With that, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make the motion that $500,000 be earmarked for the Visit Tucson so that they can do the film industry incentive program that they're doing right now and trying to reel more movie action into the city.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion on this particular piece?
Well, Steve, you have nothing to say?
And Councilmember Kozakic?
Yeah, well, first of all, I'm obviously fully supportive of the motion and, but I did have a question or comment for Mike on, on the prior discussion. So Mike, and everyone, you know, 10 years ago, the unfilled vacancies used to be used, and I'll just say it, by staff, as a way, as a means of balancing the budget at the end of the year. We were told all year long that we've got a $20 million deficit or what, pick your number. And then mysteriously, at the end of the fiscal year, that dwindled down and dwindled down, and all of a sudden, we were, we were balanced. And that was the way it was used, and that's the way those unused, unfilled vacancies were used in the past. Many of us threw a flag on that, and Mike, you did too. But let's understand, we just gave people a significant pay raise, which they deserved. There will be increases in costs as a result of that. I mean, dollars are dollars. And, you know, the, we, we all understand that, you know, our employees, as the mayor said, is our most valued asset, and they, they deserve the raise. We did the market study. Yes, that's going to increase our costs. So Mike, can you and/or Jeff just sort of walk through real, basically, how you expect us to be stabilized in two, three years, realizing that, yeah, we're spending more money and we should be?
Sure. So Mayor, Councilman Kozakic, there's actually a few different pieces to this. One is, based on our, our analysis and our conversations with the University of Arizona and their, their economics, we're projecting out what our growth is over the next five years. So there, we are expecting a slight growth going forward. So that's number one. That's one piece. The second piece is the fact that we have, through your leadership, squirreled away money to be used for, I'll, I'll call it, operations in the short term. So if you remember, when we started the conversation, we have, I believe it's $181 million in the bank, okay? So $181 million, after you take out the policy level for the unassigned and for the stabilization piece, is about $87 million. To me, that's an inefficient use of dollars to just have them sitting in the bank. And so what we did is we sat down and went through, how do we drain some of that down? Use some of those dollars now for the needs that the community has. And so we're taking the new revenue plus using some of that fund balance. But you can't use fund balance if you, if, you know, obviously if it drains down and you have nothing to replace it with, then you're, you're in trouble. So then what we did is we projected out the vacancies. And the vacancies were a big piece of that. As you, as you mentioned, Councilmember Kozakic, the discussion point there was how we balance the budget for many, many years, right? And, and, and I'm not critical of that. It just, it, it is what it is, and that's how we, we did business. But now, if we can factor that in, going back to Councilwoman Santa Cruz's point, we can factor that in and be, we have history. We know what those vacancies are going to be. In, in a perfect world, what you see on those projections is what's going to happen. We know we don't live in a perfect world. But the key piece to this is, we have dials, right? We can, we can on an annual basis scale back. And by the way, that doesn't have, we don't have to wait for the budget. We can scale those back at any time. You know, I can, I can scale back how we fill, fill positions. I, I can scale back and I can turn the dials, right? And that's a key piece of flexibility we didn't have before. And so I think that as we go forward and you look at that five-year projection, the fact that, number one, we have those dollars in the bank, that's huge. We wouldn't be doing this if, if we didn't have those dollars in the bank. I mean, that's just the bottom line. But we, we are showing some projections for improvement, right? But we can also, we can also turn the dials. And the turning of the dials is really where the conversation that I mentioned to Councilwoman Santa Cruz, on an annual basis, we can have the discussion. And if, if there are, we're carrying more vacancies than what we obviously know we're going to fill, then I think that, that's a very healthy discussion to say how to use those dollars better and do it upfront versus after the fact. That's the key piece. So hopefully that answers your question.
All righty. I do see Councilmember Ulrich's hand up, and we are way over our 40-minute discussion. A lot of conversation, but go ahead, Councilmember Ulrich, and then there is a motion on the floor.
I'll be super brief. I just wanted to echo just the, the, the importance, I think, and I'm hearing it really from everybody who's speaking, that, you know, we can't just keep having a budget predicated on staffing configuration that's not real, right? And so that history you're talking about, Mike, at some point, we need, you know, to look at the staffing in public safety and really across the organization. If we've been carrying, you know, a, a vacancy deficit, if you will, then it might mean we also need to rethink how things are staffed so that we can bring more staffing to certain areas. It may not be the same kind of position. It may not be the same configuration. But I think it really is an important part of the process. And it sounds like you have a, an eye toward how you can bring that to mayor and council. And, and in order to be able to reprogram those dollars, right? So we may, we may have 100 positions that are differently defined than they have in the past, but they'll be filled. And they'll actually contribute toward the missions of the department. And their salary levels and compensation may be different. So it's a key part of the process, and I appreciate the conversation, the really important points being raised.
Mayor, before you call for the question, I, I did want to just point out a couple things, a few things, actually. Number one, it, it's important that the, the, that you, Mayor, and the city council recognize decisions that you've made over the years are what's resonating today in terms of that flexibility. The pension obligation bonds, that's huge. That's huge. Again, not seeing a lot of value today, but going forward, it's going to be a big deal. I think the employee pay, as you, as you mentioned, from a recruitment and retention standpoint, the fact that we have money in the bank, we, we're not rolling in dough. I don't want to give that impression. But certainly, it, it improves the flexibility and the opportunities that you have. And then the road investment, you know, the road investment that you've made out of the general fund is, is big. You know, we haven't traditionally been able to do that, and that's a big piece of this. But the last thing is the structural balance, the fact that we can project out and demonstrate the structural balance, which is that fiscal sustainability in the long term. Thank you, Mayor. That's all.
Thank you so much. So we have a live motion in a second. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you so much. I think that during the conversation, the public hearing on the tentative budget adoption, we will have additional time if you all want to add to the conversation on this particular piece. We are moving on to item five. Item five, Councilmember Kozakic has requested discussion of House Bill 2111 and the Second Amendment firearm freedom act. Mr. Kozakic?
Thank you. Earlier this session, in fact, on April 6th, I'll be brief, Governor Duce, excuse me, Governor Duce signed a bill announcing that in the state of Arizona, we will not be recognizing the authority of any federal gun laws. It's the first gun control nullification bill to be signed in the country. Since then, five or six other counties within the state have declared themselves Second Amendment sanctuary counties. And these bills are being considered in about, about a dozen more states around the country. Right now, the Biden administration is considering a series of new gun control laws on ghost guns, on expanding background checks, on expanding red flag laws, providing resources related to firearms trafficking, and a bunch more. The bill, the, the bill, HB 2111, that Governor Duce signed, its intent is to say that we are not going to recognize any of those federal laws within this, within the state specifically. And in our case, within the city of Tucson. The U.S. Constitution has Article 6, Clause 2, it's called the supremacy clause. And what it says is, the U.S. Constitution is the supreme law of the land, and states cannot preempt it on issues of federal, federal control. Today, all I'm asking the council to do is to support a resolution, ask, ask the city attorney to prepare a resolution that simply states our intention to enforce federal gun laws in the city of Tucson. And that, that's really it. The, the, so the motion would be to give direction to the city attorney to adopt a resolution that says, within the city of Tucson, federal gun laws will apply regardless of what the state says.
Second. There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I do want to add something. I am, I'm very glad to see that this particular resolution is being talked about today. Thank you for bringing it forward, Councilmember Kozakic. It is, this legislation is irresponsible, it's unconstitutional, and it's unnecessary. And especially in June and Gun Violence Awareness Month, I'm happy that hopefully we'll take this step towards our resolution. Incidences of gun violence and gun-related deaths have been on the rise, very concerning, critical rise throughout the country, including here in Tucson. And, you know, and instead of having our governor and the state legislature passing common sense red flag laws, for example, they're really defying our constitution, the constitution of the United States, and really putting a limit on the wounds of gun violence in our country and in the state. And I, I am frankly disgusted with the lack of of movement in Congress to pass common sense gun laws and disgusted with the state legislature and the governor signing such irresponsible pieces of legislation. Any others?
I have a question for the city attorney. Mike, what is the best route forward in order to, and I'll just say, to, to bait the legislature into challenging our local ordinance or resolution to force the conversation to get that state law overturned?
And Mayor, Councilmember Kozakic, I think the adoption of the resolution will be that action, because it'll be a formal action by the mayor and council that says, notwithstanding this state law that's been signed by the governor in the city of Tucson, we are not going to be precluded from using our resources and our assets to enforce lawful federal gun laws. And so that'll, that'll lay down the field in terms of what our plans are versus how the state has written this law. One other thing that I would anticipate, and to finish answering your question, I'll also include in the resolution authorization that I can participate as and sign on on behalf of the city as amicus in litigation relating to this issue. Because as you framed the issue, Councilmember Kozakic, there are jurisdictions across the country that are adopting similar Second Amendment sanctuary statements, whether they're declarations or statutes or resolutions, whatever they are. And the litigation is already starting up, and I suspect it will be coming to a head sooner rather than later. So I would like that, I'll include that written authorization so that we can participate in what I expect will be nationwide litigation.
Good.
And you can have that resolution to us on the 22nd of June, Mr. Rankin?
I can.
Okay. Any others? All righty. Without hearing any other comments or questions, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Councilmember Kozakic. We move on to item six. Time has been set aside for discussion of the draft Move Tucson prioritized project list. Mr. Manager?
Mayor, this is an opportunity, and I'll, I'll turn it over to Diana here in a second. This is an opportunity for you all to weigh in on the Move Tucson priority list. As you know, this is something that's been going on for, we'll say, over a year. And pandemic slowed us down, the almos too, actually. Good point. But I, I think the key piece to this is the opportunity for you to weigh in on, I think we've, we've gone on the path of presenting to you the feedback that we received. But this gives you an opportunity now to guide us. And ultimately, we'll present this to our partners in, in the region for consideration as part of some of those ongoing conversations. So with that, Diana, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. I'm actually going to ask Andy to go ahead and bring up the presentation, and we'll just jump into this. We're just going to do a quick overview, and then that, then we'll turn it over and leave, leave a time for y'all to have a discussion. So Andy, if you want to, please, set up your screen for the slideshow, and then we'll jump into this with mayor and council. Are you there, Andy? Always have trouble. You're on mute, Andy. Perfect.
Okay, can you hear me now? Okay, great. My apologies. Computer moving slowly, having trouble unmuting. Bear with me as we get the slideshow up here. Okay. So, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, thank you for inviting us to talk about the Move Tucson update today. I'll try and keep this presentation brief to allow plenty of time for discussion. this presentation brief to allow plenty of time for discussion. We're here today to share the results of the Move Tucson project prioritization effort, and we have previously shared the Move Tucson unprioritized project list and the project prioritization framework, which mayor and council approved in our last update in March. This is the first opportunity to see the results of that effort and where the project scores within Move Tucson. So just as a quick review, there are five steps to the prioritization process. In step one, projects were identified, and this happened through a combination of public input, through deficiencies identified on the transportation system through our existing conditions analysis, and through a review of projects included in prior planning efforts. In step two, the entire street network was scored based on criteria aligned with the Move Tucson guiding principles, and proposed projects were assigned points based on the network scores that they overlap with. In step three, project calibration criteria were identified to consider important qualitative information not captured through the network screening process. And step four, which we're showing today, network screening scores and project calibration scores were applied to the projects to create the draft project, prioritized project list that we're sharing today. So after today's review, step five will be to develop a draft Move Tucson implementation plan recommending a combination of prioritized capital projects and system-wide program needs for the next 20 years. So again, for review, for a maximum of 100 possible points, guiding principles that contributed to the network screening scores include, you know, connected, improving the network for all modes, optimized, ensuring we're using limited street space most efficiently, safe, and identifying locations with the greatest safety needs, resilient, looking for opportunities to create a more resilient transportation system in the face of climate change, equitable, focusing investments where residents face the highest barriers to transportation. And for a maximum of 20 possible points, the calibration criteria include those listed there on the screen, so cost effectiveness, public input, closing gaps, pavement quality, heat mitigation, and human-centered design. So the project types, we've broken them into four different project types. Those include catalyst corridors, these are major street corridors with projects that would be improving, modernization projects to improve multiple modes, strategic solutions projects are small, smaller scale projects, also on major and collector streets that improve some modes, local connections, which are greenways, bike boulevards, and some sidewalk infill projects, and finally, high-capacity transit projects, new bus rapid transit and streetcar corridors. This map, which is included in the materials for today, shows all the Move Tucson projects sorted into three priority tiers. There are 234 projects totaling approximately $5 billion with a B. These projects focus on modernizing the transportation network using a complete streets approach, improving safety for all users, and increasing viable transportation choices and alternatives. This is consistent with the needs identified in the existing conditions analysis and the public input we've received throughout the process. So the focus on these projects is not primarily aimed at adding additional vehicular capacity, except in some fast-growing parts of the city, especially in the southeast. This is the map showing the ranked catalyst corridor projects in the three tiers. And just a visual to get a sense of what a catalyst corridor project might look like, this is a project example of the Drexel Road project from Mission to Alvernon. As you can see, this is a lot of deficiencies, identified needs on this major street corridor. The project proposed would resurface the street to improve the pavement condition, add enhanced bikeways, connected sidewalk networks, increase shade and landscaping, green stormwater infrastructure, provide consistent lighting throughout the corridor. This project includes new connections, like a bridge across the Santa Cruz River, and better bicycle and pedestrian connectivity over I-19, and then also intersection control and signal, signal improvements throughout the corridor. This map shows the strategic solutions projects in the three tiers. And just to get a visual of what one of those looks like, this is a project example of North Sixth Avenue from Grant to Speedway. As you can see, the main difference here is that, you know, there's already some curb and sidewalks, there's some lighting presence, so we'd be working within the existing roadway envelope to close gaps and networks for one or two modes. The local connections map here, again, these are the greenways pulled from the regional Pima County Greenway Plan, bike boulevards from the Bike Boulevard Master Plan, and sidewalk, high-priority sidewalk infill projects. The high-capacity transit projects here, these are drawn from the Long Range Regional Transit Plan and the High Capacity Transit Study. One point to note here is that a new streetcar alignment on Campbell Kino from Bridges to River Road is meant to be shown on the map, so it's, it is part of the, the project and will be moving forward, but it's just missing from the map shown here. Apologies for that. And so, you know, in addition to the Move Tucson capital projects that we just went through, the Move Tucson Implementation Plan will also look at systemic needs not tied to specific locations. We recognize this is, will be a critical component of a final implementation plan. These items are, these are items such as ADA and pedestrian improvements, pavement repair on both major and local streets, transit service improvements, safety and education programs, among others. You can see the funding needs identified with those categories there. So with that, I'll hand it back over to Diana to talk through our requests today and the next steps for the Move Tucson process.
Thank you, Andy. I appreciate that. So we are looking for feedback on the prioritization project list that has been given out to mayor and council, and then also direction from the mayor and council to be able to move forward with, to initiate the public review of the rank list and get some input back from the community. So sort of a quick timeline that we have, based on the pending direction that we're requesting, is we want to put the public review out for the, the rest of the month of June and for July. Then we'll pull those information together, we'll work on finalizing that project list and putting together a draft implementation plan. We would want to return back before mayor and council with that draft implementation plan to be reviewed by both the mayor and council and the Complete Street Coordinating Council. And then October, we would be looking to actually bring this back to mayor and council for approval and adoption of Move Tucson. So with that, I'll turn it over and open it back up to your, to the mayor and council for any comment that we can take. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Diana and Andy, for your presentation and for all the work that's been invested in this. Any of my colleagues have any questions? Councilmember Fimbras, and then Councilmember Santa Cruz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There is a need in Ward Five for rebuilding, complete streets which have not been prioritized for more, and have not been worked on, rebuilt or repaired for more than about 30 years. So I would like to the following areas in Ward Five to be prioritized higher than, for the Move Tucson list so that they can have complete and rebuilt streets. Park Avenue, the 37th, 39th Street West, the Las Vista Neighborhood, the Western Hills Two Neighborhood, the South Park Neighborhood, the area of Drexel to the north, Billby to the south, Sixth Avenue West, and Old Nogals Highway to the east. And I will send this over to you, Diana. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your
Thank you for your work. You've been doing an outstanding job. We still have people that haven't had any streets done, especially residential, so we appreciate your efforts.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Fimbras, for the input. Councilmember Santa Cruz?
Yeah, thank you. I don't really have questions. I just, you know, again, wanted to, you know, thank, you know, Diana and Andy and the rest of the team who've been working on this, and also the Complete Streets Coordinating Council for providing, you know, their feedback to the mayor and council. I, I have this conversation with Diana and Andy every time we meet. I always think that the transportation issues that we have in Ward One are slightly different because of I-10 and I-19 really being a physical barrier from the rest of the city, so we don't actually are in such a, like, nicely laid-out grid system like the rest of the city, and a lot of these improvements are on, like, main arterials and main corridors. And so as we keep moving forward, I just, you know, I ask that we continue to, to, to see this as like a living document, where as we work with communities and neighborhoods about their transportation issues and needs, that they can continue to provide that feedback, because I know that my district was one of the ones that had lowest, you know, engagement compared to the rest of the city. And I also just want us to consider, like, how are we thinking, like, with the bike boulevards, just other kinds of connections that are missing, how do we continue to work with ADOT and push them on the frontage road, and how that can be more accessible, you know, off the road, but off to the side for people who need to walk and bike to move north-south? Also, just having a better connection as you're moving south on frontage into 12th Avenue, like, there just needs to be a better way that we connect folks on the west side to the, to the 12th Avenue, that doesn't, that it doesn't just have to be, you have to be on the loop, you know, to get there, or you have to go way out of your way off to 10th Avenue to walk or bike to get to the south side. So that's just something that I want to, like, you know, bring forward, that we can continue to work on that. And I'm trying to, I feel like I had another point, and I just forgot about it. But yeah, if we can just, like, continue the, you know, the engagement and the conversation for this, but also just thank you for all y'all's work on this, and really looking forward to it.
Thank you, Councilmember Santa Cruz. I guess to follow up on that, on those comments, Diana, within the next two months, you said you wanted additional public input and participation. Council colleagues are also encouraged, within the next two months, to continue giving you, I mean, it's a long list of projects, and so I just want to make sure that my council colleagues and I have the opportunity to continue giving, giving you input, just like Councilmember Fimbras gave you right now, in terms of projects that maybe we don't see in the list, and we want to make sure are looked at and included in our priority list.
Of course.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. We would actually appreciate that very much.
Okay, perfect. Councilmember Kozakic.
Sure. Earlier today, we voted to announce, or call, or call our election for, for an extension of the sales tax related to, much of which is related to road reconstruction. How, Diana, or others, will the conversation about these project lists overlay with the conversations we're going to have to have about creating the terms for that new sales tax?
I'm actually going to turn that over to the city manager for his direction.
Thanks. Thanks, Diana. So Mayor, Councilmember Kozakic, so the way I see this is the, the Move Tucson gives us the chemistry of the need on a macro scale. Then, the conversation for us as a team, the, the mayor and city council, as well as the staff, is to identify funding for that. How do we address that need? And so that will take many forms, some grant money going to the voters, having conversations with the regional partners. And so I think the first order of business is to identify and, and make sure that the need that has been discussed and has been put forth reflects what you all understand your constituencies to want and need. Then the second order of business is how we translate that into potentially different buckets, you know, different opportunities for funding that going forward.
And will you be, when, when will you, Mike, begin your own, your own survey related to the TPT extension? And what is that going to look like? So again, it's all timing.
Sure. So given the direction that we just received from, from mayor and council earlier, we'll start post haste. I think that conversation, at least internally, needs to happen post haste, so as early as the next week or so. I'll gather the, the staff, make sure that we have a game plan, and start having an understanding of what's that process look like for soliciting feedback and thoughts on what a vote or ask might look like, a ballot measure might look like.
When do we have to have specific language ready for a ballot measure if it, if it takes place in May?
Mayor, I'm going to go on a little bit of a limb here. I think it's about January.
I think it is, too.
Yeah, I, I think so. I'm embarrassed that I don't have that committed a memory. What I'll do is I'll confirm that with the city attorney and city clerk, and I'll, I'll send out a memo to the council with that timeframe and that date.
Yeah, knowing, knowing what our deadline is is going to inform back, backing into the rest of the discussion.
Good point. Thank you.
No offense.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember. And I think this, this particular list of priority projects and all of the work that, that the Department of Transportation already have done, gives us really a good idea as to what could potentially be added in a, in a question to the voters of what they want to fund and for how long. But this work, this legwork is based on the citizens' input and feedback of their priorities. I did want to share with you all as well that I have been working with our congressional delegation on the Invest in America Act, which is mostly a transportation and infrastructure bill. The, both senators' offices and Congressman Grijalva, Congresswoman Kirkpatrick, and others have, including Representative, Representative Stanton from the Phoenix area, have approached my office in terms of projects that they could earmark for the city of Tucson. And in conjunction with the city manager and Diana Larkon, my office worked with the congressional offices, and we sent up a list of projects that the city of Tucson is interested in having our congressional delegation from Southern Arizona earmark. We received that list just yesterday, and these are the projects that the congressional offices decided to include in their earmarks. Fifth and Sixth Street, complete street projects, both Representative Grijalva and Representative Kirkpatrick have decided to put $3.5 million each in requests for earmarks. Drexel Road Extension and Bridge Project, Representative Grijalva has asked for a $5 million earmark for that project. South Campbell Avenue Complete Streets Project, Representative Grijalva requested a $6.2 million earmark. And then the Tucson Bus Rapid Transit Corridor, both Representative Grijalva, Representative Kirkpatrick, and Representative Stanton, at included funds to earmark, all combined $6.5 million for that project. So that is very, very good news for the city of Tucson. It is a transportation, Surface Transportation Act, it's called Invest in America, that Transportation and Infrastructure Committee is scheduled to markup this act this Wednesday, tomorrow. So this is another possibility to get funds from the federal government, and that does not include the American Jobs Plan, which is the infrastructure plan that President Biden wants to include funds for infrastructure for the United States. So it's great for our region, it's great for the city of Tucson, and that's another way of possible investment in these projects. Mr. Ortega.
Mayor, city clerk Randolph just let me know it's 120 days for the election, or before, you know, before the election, so we're probably looking at the first week of January is when that material for a May election would have to be ready to go.
Alrighty. I do not see any other hands up. Diana, did you want to include anything else, or Mr. Ortega, any of my colleagues?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm good. If we are ready to proceed forward, and we will also be happy to visit with any of the ward offices and the mayor, your office as well, to make sure that we get all of that input and that we have the most comprehensive plan as possible. So thank you for the opportunity.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Ortega?
No, Mayor. Thank you.
Alrighty.
Madam Mayor, I want to thank you for reaching out to our national elected officials to get an additional funding in to help us with our roads and our streets in our most needed areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fimbras.
I think we should send a letter of thank you to them also, Madam Mayor.
Absolutely. More than a letter. I think I'll take them out to lunch and, whatever they'd like to eat, maybe Guero Canelo. Thank you all. That's, we're moving on to item seven now. Thank you so much, Diana, and we will be giving you additional input. Let us know how we can continue involving our communities. And we will be giving you additional input. Let us know how we can continue involving our communities in the process to help you add additional projects or look at the projects that we currently have on the list. Thank you. Alrighty, let's move on to item seven. Councilmember Fimberas has requested an update on the city's electronic payments program. Councilmember Fimberas.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. During the August 2011 monthly mayor and council meeting, I brought forward the first mayor and council update on the procurement card, also known as the P Card program the city of Tucson had. The P Card had seldom used by the city staff, only bringing in $7,000 rebate is based on the city's spending for goods and services. The P Card is a program for which the city can track its spending for goods and services and save a significant amount of funds of transaction charges and gives us the city a rebate back for usage. I moved the city manager report back to mayor and council on the usage of the P Card since the first update in August 2011. During these updates, we have tracked spending by department and learned through a study conducted by J.P. Morgan that the average cost for the P Card is $20 per transaction, while the standard accounting process costs $92 per transaction. The city of Tucson has had between $60,000 to $70,000 transactions annually, which is a savings of $4.3 million to $5.5 million alone. Through these updates and support of my colleagues and the council, the P Card is bringing in a million dollars in rebate to the city as well. This isn't about the spending more money, but spending the money we have in a better way through the P Card program. I want to know, now turn this over to the city manager for a few words and the presentation, and then time for questions for myself and my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Fimberas. With very few words, I'll turn it over to Jeff Yates. So Jeff, go ahead and do your presentation. Thanks.
And thank you, Mike. And everyone should be able to see the presentation. So as mentioned, we're going to review quickly, in the light of time, kind of what the electronic payments program is all about. As Councilman Fimberas mentioned, we have a P Card program, which is the purchasing card, similar to a credit card for the public. Ours is a MasterCard. We also ventured into what's referred to as V Payables, or virtual payments, which are similar in nature to P Card and work through our bank and provide the city a similar type of rebate. So with that, I'll go through the presentation. The P Card program in 2018, we spent about $65.7 million, 2019, right around 70. And as we expected, as we slowed down with the pandemic, our spend dropped a little bit to about $62.7. And those provided us rebates of around $1 million each year. Those funds are deposited largely in the general fund. It are used to offset the cost of the maintenance of this program, as well as the internal controls, and as to support general operations. The P Card spend by department, as you can see, it varies wildly between departments. We can see that the bigger users are EGSD, FIRE, transportation, mobility, and so forth. And I think it's important for the public to understand that generally what we use a P Card for is the purchase of small dollar items, office supplies. Generally, that threshold's below $10,000, and in most cases, below the $2,500 cut line. And what this allows them to do is effectively go and buy supplies or online through our contract with our office supply vendor and so forth. So what it does, and where the money is saved, that Councilman Fimberas mentioned, is it speeds up that process, so you don't have to process POs, you don't process requisitions and all that, all those steps. The process is you use your P Card, you buy whatever it is, then you reconcile your P Card. Your manager, whoever's in charge of your P Card, signs off and approves those expenditures, and then they're credited against your account. Additionally, the city pays within about 45 days of that, so there is a little bit of cash carry that occurs in that process. The V Payables, we started our first V Payables in September. We signed up vendors, working with Bank of America and making an aggressive charge to get that, because it's even a faster process, particularly for the vendor. We've got about one, almost $2 million of spend as people come into that program. I will tell you one thing that we have noticed is that businesses, and particularly small businesses, are a little more cognizant of the cost of doing business this way and the transactional cost, because the P Card and the V Payables cost the vendor money to process, because it's a merchant card or a payment through that system. So the rebate we get is a portion of the banking fees that the vendor pays to the banks. So we've seen that change just a little bit. We do state our intent of our contracting, that we prefer this version of payment, but we also ask what the impact is to the contract cost. We have paid payments as big, or more than $1 million that the vendor will accept, and as little as probably, you know, $2, $3, $4. So it varies wildly across the spectrum. It's another tool in our AP toolkit that allows us to pay efficiently and effectively and get that money to the vendor. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Mayor, and answer any questions you may have, and I'm happy to discuss it in more detail, or you'll the rest of my time.
Thank you, Jeff. Really appreciate the presentation. Councilmember Fimberas, if you have any questions or any of my...
Madam Mayor, when we originally brought this important issue forward and requested the continued updates, the grant was to have spending for goods and services conducted by using the P Card and not now be payable, saving taxpayer money using a transparent and accountable process. Our work continues toward this. I would like to mount the following motion. To direct the city manager to meet further with department directors regarding the usage of the P Card and V Payables, and to report back to the mayor and council in the first meeting in September with an update on how the city will increase its usage of both the P Card and V Payables at a minimum of 15% for fiscal year '22 to a potential maximum of 50% for the city purchases by fiscal year '26. That's my motion.
Second.
There's a motion in a second.
There's a motion in a second. Any further discussion? There's no other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Ortega or Mr. Yates, anything else on this item?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll be back in September.
Thank you, Mr. Ortega. Item eight, this has, this item has been continued at the request of staff, and we move on to item nine. Time has been set aside for discussion of state and national legislation and regional committee issues. Mr. Ortega?
Mayor, excuse me, Mayor, members of the council, this is just the opportunity for Andrew to update us. I know that part of the conversation during the budget was what's going on with the state budget, because that does have a potential impact, and Andrew will cover that in his remarks. Thanks. Andrew?
Great. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. As was discussed earlier, there's still no direction from the state legislature on what's called the flat tax proposal as part of the state budget. There was a vote yesterday in the House, and the proposal failed by just one vote. So it is unclear at this point what the legislature will do. They are not due to go back into session, both the House and the Senate, until Thursday. So we hope to know more then about what direction they may go in. I do want to mention that mayor and council's resolution is one that I've shared widely at the legislature in opposition to the flat tax proposal. I also want to mention that most of our local delegation is standing by us and has voted to support the interests of the city and many other stakeholders in voting to oppose the flat tax proposal to this point in time. So I did want to mention that and make sure mayor and council are aware of that. As soon as we have some direction on where the legislature will go, of course, we understand that it has significant implications for our budget, and we will share that information as soon as we get it. With that, there are no bills for mayor and council consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a question, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilmember Fimberas.
An update on PFAS, PFOs, legislation before Congress. As you know, we had a press conference today on that hot issue and had to looking at closing our treatment plan down because of this issue.
Sure. Yeah, so Honorable Mayor, members of the council, there is a lot going on right now in Congress related to PFAS. There's a number of bills that are being considered by the Congress. I've sent the information about those bills to mayor and council, and happy to get more information as those bills move through the process.
Thank you.
There's to actually start treating, creating and controlling PFAS. And so we're, of course, we're supporting those. And then there are also opportunities as part of the American Jobs Plan, the infrastructure plan that the mayor mentioned earlier. There is, in the president's proposal, proposed $110 billion to deal with water issues nationwide, of which $10 billion is earmarked for PFAS. And so we are supporting all of those as a way to get those needed funds here to Tucson. And then I just want to add that in response to the mayor, to the press conference today, I've already seen a press release from Representative Grijalva in support of the council's, in support of the city's action, and expressing his support for gaining that federal funding that we need. I also expect to see something from Representative Kirkpatrick. And then one last thing on this, tomorrow morning, there is a hearing in the United States Senate on PFAS on a committee that Senator Kelly serves on, and I believe his comments are likely to refer to some of the issues here in Tucson, as well as the city's actions today.
Andy, is there any legislation going on about treatment, medical treatment for personnels that worked on these things for years in those medical, those military facilities that are now sick with cancer and other ailments? Is there anything being considered about them, like we did with the TCE?
So Honorable Mayor, members of the council, there are provisions of some of those PFAS bills that are meant to deal with some of the health-related issues that service members may have been, may have been subject to through, you know, perhaps to exposure to PFAS. There's also bills that aim, that look forward and are meant to fund research for firefighters, particularly, what kinds of protocols and can be developed to protect public health for those who may have been especially exposed to PFAS.
Thank you. Thank you, Andy. One more question, please provide the status of the presidential appointments.
If you move forward, Councilmember Fimberas, on the PFAS issue, as you said in the, and thank you for being at the press conference today. I did, we did receive notification from Congressman Grijalva and Congresswoman Kirkpatrick that they are sending a letter to the Secretary of Defense, bringing to the attention the shutting down of TARP, the decision that we made on the city of Tucson. And we're hoping, both Congresswoman Kirkpatrick and Congressman Grijalva are hoping that this is an Arizona delegation letter to the Secretary of Defense to make sure that we, that they act quickly on the issue of PFAS in the city of Tucson. So that letter is going out either today or tomorrow. And so it's all hands on deck on behalf, from our congressional delegation, on behalf of the city of Tucson.
Anything on postal legislation? Andrew?
So Honorable Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Fimberas. Yes, in fact, there are a couple of postal reform bills that have been approved by the House Oversight Committee. They have a number of provisions in them that are consistent with positions mayor and council have taken in the past relative to support of service reform. They reform the issue having to do with the pre-funding of retirement health benefits. They preserve the six-day delivery schedule. They even have some provisions that deal with protection for mail-in ballots, as well as other investments in the postal service. At the same time, in the Senate, there's also been a postal reform bill that has been introduced. One of the cosponsors of that bill is Senator Sinema. And so we're hopeful that that bill will start moving in the Senate, and ultimately, we may be building the building blocks here for an actual postal reform bill that we can get through this Congress that will, you know, helps make more stable the finances of the postal service, and ultimately provide that support that we need to protect Cherry Bell, because it's so needed for the level of service that we expect here in Tucson.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Andrew.
Alrighty. Any other colleagues? Councilmember Kozaczek?
Thanks. In the Star this morning, there was an article about the flat tax. I don't remember the guy's name, but one guy, one Republican broke ranks and said that it was too all-encompassing, but he also indicated that there were some things that he would be willing, if they changed them, he'd be willing to sign on. Do you have any sort of indication as to what the impact on us would be if he got what he's after? Is it still going to be as difficult financially on us, or are you sure? Do you have any information on that?
I do. Honorable Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Kozaczek. So all the Democrats and one Republican voted in the House yesterday, and that was enough to defeat the bill. It was a 30 to 30 vote, and they needed 31. Representative Cook, in his public statements, has said that he feels that the revenue shortfall that would be caused by the proposal, tax cap. There's another proposal that would limit the income tax of anyone in Arizona to not more than 4.5%. And it's those two together that would cost the Treasury about $1.9 billion a year. Representative Cook is saying that that's too much for him. He'd like to see a smaller tax cut, maybe in the $1 billion a year range. Some of that may be permanent, some of that may be time debate. So, you know, the, so at the end of the day, it's not clear what the impact of that would be. But it would be a smaller tax cut if the, ultimately what passes is along the lines of what Representative Cook supports. But then I'd also add that Representative Cook, who represents an area in Penal County, covers cities like Florence and Coolidge, those mayors have reached out to him and said that they don't support the flat tax and want to be made whole. They want to make sure they don't lose money. And Representative Cook has expressed some support for that as well. So it's, it would be, the impact ultimately on us would be, what are the revenue shortfalls from any tax cut? And then compared to if there are measures to try to make cities whole, how much is in there? And what would that mean to us as well?
Right. Yeah, I don't see any other hands up. Thank you so much, Andrew. Really appreciate your work. We know that you've been, we've had you working a lot these days, but appreciate the update.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We move on to item 10. Does anyone have any items to remove from the consent agenda?
I just have a question, since we have a little time to maybe this would prevent it from being a rub. It's consent D. It's the property, just properties that we're transferring to the county. The property descriptions by parcel number were pretty much worthless. You know, they give the, you know, all the, you know, what they gave. Are these all riverbeds, or is it land that's developable? Item number seven in the list says, gives a description, you know, the parties agree that the parcels are intended to be transferred and dedicated. But then one sentence also says that it's transferring other, quote, beneficial public uses. So I'm just wondering if these are, if any of this is commercially developable, or maybe a better description of those parcels than simply the list of parcel numbers?
Sure. Mayor, Councilman Kozaczek. So the first order business is the vast majority are wash bottoms, but not all. There are some that are up on top of the bank. The way that we've addressed that is by saying that it has to be used for flood control purposes. So the idea is that any property that we're conveying is for flood control purposes. And there's two pieces to that. One is the maintenance of the washes, as well as for the linear park, the river park, the loop, those other pieces that are associated with the flood control district. Now, there is one parcel that is at Irvington and the Santa Cruz River that we had excluded and we will continue to exclude. What I will... What I will ask is that you expand that exclusion a little farther south, about 300 feet, not because we'll need all that land, but I want to leave us some flexibility because we are having some conversations about some potential development there on the corner, and what I don't want to do is have to go back and have a conversation about that in the future. So that one piece already excludes the corner piece, which is the parking right lot, but there is a piece further south that I'm going to recommend. It's basically a triangular piece that's next to, I believe it's Valley Road. So that's, and what I can do, if you'd like, is I can get you the maps. I thought those maps have been made available, and happy to go over those with you in detail.
Well, it's on consent tonight, and it's really, it appears to be mostly lane stuff and maybe some, a couple way out east. So I don't want to, you know, fish in their pond right now, but I couldn't tell from the partial descriptions what we were really talking about.
Yeah, thank you, Steve. I also had some other concerns, and I was going to pull it from consent because I couldn't see the maps, like what we could see wasn't helpful at all, and so I just, because of the conversations we've had in the past, I wanted to make sure that all of that was aligned, so I would have been helpful for me to like, know that this was coming up just so that we got those questions answered beforehand.
I have a question to follow up on that. The, the land that you did say is developable, is that still part of the conveyance to Pima County?
Mayor, it is for the purposes of flood control.
Oh, you're on mute.
Yeah, thank you. So yes, but it is restricted for flood control purposes, and the vast majority of that will be used, again, if it's on top of the bank, is for the linear park or park-like structures associated with flood control.
And is that to the discretion of Pima County, or is that solidly for the purposes of use of flood control and not developable?
It's flood control purposes, so they can develop it for flood control purposes, such as the park, the linear park, those kinds of things.
Alrighty. Councilmember Santa Cruz, did you still want to remove it from consent, or are you happy with, with the response now?
I guess I can be fine with it. If something's off with it later, I'm just going to come after the city manager.
So we're not removing it from the consent agenda. I think it could be approved with everything else. Any others interested in removing from consent agenda?
Oh, does Mike need that one amended to, to pull a couple of those pieces off?
Yeah, Mayor, what I'll do is, as we get ready, the city attorney can read that one piece. I'm not worried about it, it's really a definition. That's in the second year of the transfer, and so all I'll do is make sure that the legal description that's associated with that reflects the conversation that I just had with you, but we'll read that into the record ahead of time, that's all.
Okay. Alrighty, let's move on to item 11. Does anyone have any future agendas or agenda items? Seeing none. Study session is adjourned. The regular session will begin at 5:30 PM. The next study session meeting will be Tuesday, June 22 of this year. So we have a little bit of time to have dinner and stretch your legs, and then come back right at 5:30. Thank you all. We'll see you in an hour.